One minute, one minute.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany's first work session of the year 2024. It's Monday, January 8th, 4:00 PM. I'd like to thank all of you for joining us this evening for our first city council meeting of the year. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. And Gabe, can you please do a roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. We'll start with the city councillors. Mayor Alex Johnson II, councillors Newton, Novak, Montague, Kopczynski, McGee, and Smith. Five councillors present. Commissioners Ramirez, Sidal, Vernig, McCullough. Okay. Oh, and Ramirez is online, sorry. Striper and Cratch. Six commissioners, Your Honor. One is online.
Thank you. So first and foremost, Councilor Montague is traveling for work, and so she will not be here tonight. Excused absence. And with that, the item number two on the tonight's agenda is Highway 20 corridor study. DKS associates Rob Emmons and Rich, excuse me, Ron Irish will be a verbal presentation. And gentlemen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to thank council, of course, for being here and the Transportation Advisory Committee. This is a chance for you to kind of firsthand get a peek at what we've been doing for the last several months. So we'll play musical chairs a little bit up here as we get started. But the bulk of the presentation will be from DKS. So Aaron and then Scott will come up here in just a sec. So with that, I want to just thank everybody. And I think I can speak for Aaron that if you have questions, please, please ask during the presentation, and we can kind of have a question and answer and presentation as we go. All right. With that, I'll turn it over to DKS.
Rob. Okay. So today, we're going to go over some background on the studies of the purpose and a little discussion on ODOT jurisdiction on the US 20 corridor. And then we're going to do an overview of the process. So we're going to talk about the corridor evaluation we performed, the alternative screening, and then some of the concepts we've developed. We're going to dive in a little bit into our traffic analysis findings. So we're going to talk about kind of the future baseline or no build condition on the corridor, and then look at some bundles of projects we've identified to try to address some of the issues we're seeing on the corridor today and in the future. We're going to wrap up with some key findings, and then we'll walk through some next steps. So some background on the study. Purpose of this study is to evaluate the current and future traffic conditions on the US 20 corridor through Albany. So the study extents are from US 20, it's really US 20, including Lyon Street and Ellsworth Street, from 99E to North Albany Road. So that's the, that's the study extents. And the purpose of this project is to identify projects to improve transportation conditions on this corridor.
I'll just add to that, too. As we're looking at that, we're looking at safety, operations, and also multimodal improvements, looking for bicycle and pedestrian, motor vehicles, trucks. So we're really looking, providing a comprehensive evaluation of this corridor through this work.
Yep. So focus on all modes of travel. We're planning to develop a recommended implementation sequence as well for the proposed improvements we identify as part of this study. So as different funding sources come available, things like that, ways to implement these projects in a logical sequence. So just a quick note on ODOT jurisdiction. The US 20 corridor is under ODOT's jurisdiction, so all proposed improvements must receive ODOT approval for implementation. None of the improvements we've identified so far have funding, although there is some funding potential for some of these through the ODOT Arts Program, and we'll talk about that a little bit at the end of the presentation.
And I will add, too. There is a technical advisory committee that Rob and Ron have been managing through this process, and ODOT has several members on that. So they've, they've seen a lot of the recommendations that we have, we're sharing with you tonight through this process.
Right. So moving into an overview of the study process, we started with the corridor evaluation. So we were looking really at existing and future year, 20-year horizon conditions on the corridor. And we're identifying needs for related to safety, bikes and Peds, traffic operations, all along the corridor. This map highlights some of the key, key issues we saw in the corridor. A lot of these are familiar, familiar to any of you who have driven this corridor. For example, Spring Hill and US 20, there's some congestion issues at that location, as well as some safety issues. First and Lyon, congestion, everybody who's driven through that during rush hour is aware of those issues as well. There's also some safety issues and issues for bicycles and pedestrians trying to get through that intersection. Traffic congestion issues at Second and Third and Lyon, or safety, sorry, safety issues at Second and Third and Lyon, and then congestion issues at First and Second and Ellsworth. The downtown unsignalized intersections have limited protection for pedestrian, pedestrian crossings. So there are crosswalks, but no other real protection. Then down at 99E and really the end of the couplet, Ninth and Lyon, there's also some congestion issues down there. That's kind of that challenging little interchange configuration. And then on the whole corridor, through the couplet, Lyon and Ellsworth Street, the bike facilities are also somewhat challenging. It's sharos right now, so bikes are sharing the road with a lot of vehicle traffic. Those are the key issues we identified on this corridor. After identifying the issues, we moved into our, our alternatives development and screening process. So we developed different project alternatives targeting these identified corridor needs. The initial alternatives we developed were screened for fatal flaws against a set of evaluation criteria that we put together with the technical team in collaboration with ODOT and city staff. So our evaluation criteria were based on motor vehicle operations. Does a project improve motor vehicle operations, or does it make things worse? Parking impacts, impacts to pedestrian, bicycles and transit facilities, impacts to existing driveway access, safety, and cost. Those were our initial criteria. If a project, if a proposed alternative was clearly making one of these much, much worse than the existing condition, that would be considered a fatal flaw, and we didn't advance the alternative further. So the alternatives that passed this initial screening were further conceptually designed and analyzed, and the results of these, these alternatives are what we'll be sharing today.
Two questions. On the previous slide, there was a safety need, multimodal need, operational need. I just wanted to know if you could define those, and then also elaborate more on the evaluation criteria.
Yeah. So for the, the safety and multimodal need, safety issues were, I think, the, the ones at First and Lyon, that was a Spis site, and Scott's a expert in that.
For the safety needs, there, there were some that was based on actual crash data. So you were having pedestrian. So at First and Lyons, there was a couple of pedestrian crashes at that location, or also based on potential risk. Maybe there weren't crashes there, but similar types of crashes were happening at similar intersections within the city. So that's kind of the safety-related need.
You said pedestrian crashes. That means vehicle and pedestrian conduct.
Correct.
And I believe that pedestrian and vehicle crash was at Second and Ellsworth? Or Second and Lyon? I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. But there's, there was one fairly recently in that kind of tight, tight couplet of First, Second, Ellsworth, and Lyon Street.
There was one at First and Lyons, too, where it was a left turn, a northbound left turn that hit a pedestrian in the crosswalk on the west side of the intersection.
Will you be able to share all this data with us, for like the bicycling data, and then also the pedestrian, or any?
Yeah. So yeah, so all the crash data would be part of the appendices to any report that we put out. And there, there's, will be more discussion, too, in the, the report of the details of what, kind of the crash breakdown and patterns and things like that we saw at these locations.
Fantastic.
And then on the multimodal side, and we took counts, there are not a lot of pedestrians or cyclists in this area, partly because it's very, very challenging. I think Rob can tell you a little bit about that. I believe he, he rides through here. But we did see, we did see some, and it's definitely probably the most concerning location for bikes and Peds, besides the actual on-system issues with Lyon Street and Ellsworth for bikes, is that, that westbound right turn at Lyon and First Street. That, that crossing is difficult for pedestrians, with a lot of vehicles making that right turn. So that's a...
Heavy right turn.
Yeah, heavy right turn location.
Gentlemen?
Councilor Novak.
I have a question. I, I represent Ward One, and I am in the part of North Albany that is over the bridge. I come down North Albany Road to get into town. I don't see that, that was not part of the study? Or is it? And I just don't see it.
We looked at North Albany Road. We weren't seeing significant, I guess, congestion or safety issues at that location. Now, we did see, there was some traffic there caused by issues at, for example, Spring Hill and US 20. There's queue spillback from that intersection that has an impact on that intersection. But typically with a study like this, we try to focus on, especially when it's a congestion issue, we try to find what's the, where's the key location, right? Because if you have, if you have a bottleneck, you're going to have traffic congestion issues at...
Well, there are an awful lot of folks, there's a lot of build-out in North Albany over the last decade, two decades, and you can go down Spring Hill, or you can go down North Albany Road. That's it. There are no other alternatives that I'm aware of if you want to come into town. And my experience has been, most of the time, it takes forever. It takes a darn long time to get from North Albany Road just onto Highway 20 and then over the bridge. And I, I was really hoping that that would be addressed. And I'm going to tell you, I drive it every day. It's a problem. It's, it's not insignificant. And my...
I'm the bike guy.
Who lives in North Albany along with me. And do you have anything you want to say with regard to that?
No, but it does require some experience and awareness. And it might actually be time for us to begin to look at not just safety, but alternatives. Mass transit, we have it, but are we addressing those needs? The bridge traffic down Ellsworth is, comes from various places, all the way from Corvallis and, and North Albany, funnels into that one spot, especially in the morning rush hour. And it would, your study, as I understand it, addressed the question of where do these people go? And you said 70% of them go north, which I presume means, in some cases, even the freeway. So let's make sure that we are addressing the question of where do people come from and where do they want to go? And in jurisdictions much larger than ours, such as Portland, where the MAX line was found to be an alternative to automobile traffic, we need to look ahead and see if that's the case here. Obviously, not right now, but in the future. We don't want to have a bottleneck that requires converting Albany from a friendly, traffic-friendly place to overpasses and the kind of solutions that have characterized our cities elsewhere.
I think those are, those are good points. I think it's also important to keep the context of this study in mind, where we don't plan to with the, the alternatives we're looking at, the projects we're identifying here. This is very focused on fixing what we can do, coming up with projects that can fit into a reasonable funding package, something that could actually be built within the next, you know, 10, 15, 20 years. So, so we're not looking at things like, you know, potential new river crossings or things like that. It's, it's really focused on more, what can we do with the system you have right now to optimize it? Because there are some opportunities to significantly improve traffic operations, bicycle and pedestrian operations, and safety without major capital investment. So this is really looking at optimizing. So there, the solutions we'll look at, the stuff we'll share with you today, we don't show anything that fixes every problem, but we can, we show a lot of things that significantly improve how things, how things look. Going to keep moving, because we'll get into more detail on operations as we get there. So into the concepts, these were designed, our concepts were designed and evaluated against our 20-year horizon traffic conditions. And we did some AM peak hour, so morning rush hour analysis, and then we did more detailed PM peak hour, evening analysis. And we'll share some of the evening rush hour analysis, because that's a little bit, again, it's a pretty heavy peak, and we can see a lot of the improvements well for that one. So these concepts are, some concepts were intersection-focused, as you saw from those identified issues, and others span segments of the US 20 corridor. So starting first up at Spring Hill Drive, there were a handful of alternatives we identified at this location. The first one is really, it's a capacity enhancement, and it's, it's changing the southbound movement on Spring Hill Drive onto US 20 to a dual left turn. So right now, you have a left turn and a right turn. This would reconfigure the intersection to a shared through, or a shared right-left turn, and then a single, a second left turn lane. So you'd have two, effectively two left turn lanes. So this one would require widening, just restriping, and then some, a little bit of adjustment to the signal. Alternative sounds very simple, and I know it's actually been done in the past at this location at a, kind of at a temporary level, but there's, there's another side to this, and that's the second alternative that we've identified, which is adjusting the superelevation on that curve. You can see it on the figure, the, kind of that blue area.
The bank.
The bank on the turn. Yeah, it's, think of it like a racetrack, right? It's, it's, right now, it's, it's an 11% bank. That's beyond any standard for, for a typical facility like that. And, well, I'd say probably later this week, you're going to potentially have some issues there once things get icy. On that, on that steep a bank, just even a vehicle stopped has potential to slide.
Just a, just a quick comment. When we did that double left turn, I thought it worked, it worked admirably well. And I'm surprised that it went away, quite honestly. Why couldn't you consider doing that double left turn and that adjusting the superelevation simultaneously?
And that's, that's...
That's what we're proposing.
Yes, yes. What there was with that history, though, the double lefts, because of that superelevation, there was some truck overturning there because of the, that's the issue there. That's why we can't just go out and restripe it without the truck.
The rerouting of trucks that were identified.
That's part of the alternative. So one option is to have a truck detour along Hickory and then down to North Albany Road, and that's one of the alternatives here. But again, whether ODOT would accept that as feasible or effective is another question, too. So to really put in that double left permanently, you likely need to fix the superelevation as well, which is, that's a little bit more of an expensive project. You can see on the map we're showing here, this is what we approximate the extents of that project would be, because it's, it's quite a bit of correction to the roadway surface. So...
I was just going to add, Councilor Novak, you had brought up an issue about North Albany Road, and this improvement project actually would allow additional signal timing to be given to US 20 to actually help the North Albany intersection.
Well, I'd appreciate that, because what you just said about stopped my heart, rerouting the trucks through Hickory to North Albany, when North Albany is already a cluster fluke. I, I'm not excited about that, unless you can make it not be horrible.
I know what you meant, but I never heard that before.
And I was curious about, you could answer this first, and then I'll have another question.
Go ahead. Answer the question, then she'll go next. Councilor Novak, do you have another follow-on question?
No, I stated my concern.
I was looking at the alternative 1D with the proposed grade. I'm wondering about standing water, like drainage, or how things are going to work there. So I just wanted to see if there's some clarification.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's, and we had DEA working with us on this. They laid it out. I don't think there's any particular drainage concerns. I mean, it's, it's a steep slope becoming less steep, but it's still 6%.
It's 11% down to 6%. So everything pretty much, from what their, what their input was, it'll still drain the same, to the same locations.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty dramatic right now, so.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
ODOT was a participant.
Yes.
Did they absolutely decline the two left turn lanes, or did they?
No, no, but they're, they're concerned, I mean, the same concern that the, the city has about truck overturning. That's a, because the way the intersection's configured, it's difficult for trucks to turn from those lanes, especially with it being a double.
In icy conditions as well.
Yes, yeah. And there, there's been a, that's happened, I think, what, every three to four years or so, you have a truck rollover on that, on that turn. So it's, it's an issue that's happened. Questions? Move to the next. This is just another look at what that Hickory, Hickory route would, would look like if trucks were rerouted. And moving over, moving to the Lyon Street Bridge. So on the bridge itself, we're looking at some opportunities to improve the bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So there's, there's room on the structure to reallocate the, the lanes, lane positioning, and put in a mixed-use, barrier-separated path. So it would be bidirectional for bikes and pedestrians to get across the, the bridge, and this is a 10-foot, 10-foot facility. So this wouldn't require widening the bridge. This would be just restriping and then putting in a barrier.
Both David Evans, who's our structural engineer, and ODOT have looked at this and believe this is feasible within the existing structure.
And the goal of this pathway would be, as you follow that yellow line, it would be to actually take it all the way up to the path that's going to be built on Hickory as well, so you can connect into that part of the system. Any questions on that? All right. Moving on. So now, now we move down into the couplet and focus first on First and Lyon Street. So everybody, again, I've mentioned before, this is a very congested intersection. It's kind of one of your, one of your system bottlenecks right now. And there's a lot going on here. We looked at some kind of larger trip pattern behavior. Where are the trips coming from? Where are they going to at this location? But the, the key issue right now is that westbound right turn. You've got just that short right turn lane. People use that actually as a, people back up into the parking areas, they back up into the bike lanes when they're queuing. Gets very congested, and the combination of that right turn and then the through movement on Lyon Street really makes this intersection operate right, right near capacity today. Traffic's supposed to grow in the future as the city continues to grow. This is going to get quite a bit worse. One thing that's fairly interesting to see, the, the reason people are using First Avenue, a lot of these trips are coming from I-5. And it's, it's pretty much a coin flip versus taking First Avenue versus taking 99E right now. The part we're concerned about is as this traffic continues to grow, and both First Avenue and 99E get more congested, then folks will start to explore alternate routes, which means they're going to hit some of the local streets like Third, Fourth, and some of the streets down there, which do have some treatments to try and prevent that. But again, as congestion builds, people will get more creative with their route making. Not something we want to see, so we need to make sure that we can address some of these key locations. So the concepts we came up with here are all really centered around trying to make this a double right turn movement. So you can see concept, call it Concept 2 here. Concept 1 was screened out. Concept 2 is a double right and an exclusive through, so it's restriping the approach. Concept 4, or sorry, Concept 3 is a shared through right and then a right turn lane. And then Concept 4 is also a shared through right and a right turn lane, but with the bike lane moved to the south side. So you'd actually shift your, your bike lane along First Avenue for the, the entire length of First Avenue to the south side. That concept. And that's, that's to get the bikes away from that right turn conflict, because that's the, that's the heaviest conflict on this corridor. That first option, ODOT's not crazy about because of the lack of bike facilities. There's not really room to bring the bikes onto the sidewalk there, so it, it would get a little challenging. You'd probably have to move bikes off system in this location for that alternative to work. But those were the, those were the three concepts we're looking at this location. Again, all of these, none of these... Again, all of these, none of these involve widening. They all involve the that it's the same kind of curb to curb. There's some curb bulb out, the stuff we could do on the north northwest quadrant of the intersections, you could see that with that curb extension. But otherwise, that's that's layout. So any questions on those?
Are we anticipating the bike lanes to be protected or just striped?
For the.
Concept Four.
Concept Four.
Or any of the concepts where you have a bike?
I believe Concept Four could have some some buffer. There's enough width for a it probably not a like a standard buffer, but it would be more than just next to traffic.
What does the curb extension bulb out accomplish?
I mean, that's going to that's where the pedestrian was hit and it's reducing that pedestrian and also it allows just a space for the pedestrians on the opposite side. And it it just offsets where you have those dual right turns there or or the right turn lanes, you don't need a through vehicle. So it also limits the pedestrian time you need for the crossing and allows you to to allocate the 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 signal timing throughout the intersection.
Probably also contributes to like traffic psychology, having that large of a curb mentally will make drivers slow down.
Yeah. And along the downtowns, those curb extensions are really important because sometimes cars will try to drive through straight through and it'll provide some protection, safety protection for pedestrians.
What we found in our analysis, too, was that there are not many people trying to make that through movement. That's a very low volume. It's much more of that traffic, about 80% is trying to make that right turn.
So what does your traffic studies show for making a right turn coming down Lion to go on on the right turn on the first?
The left turn, you mean?
Right turn coming off coming, that's the other one. This is Lion, not the other one. Yeah.
Yeah, we're First and Lion, so it's the two one ways. We'll we'll look at the other intersections as we continue through. So are we set on this one?
Aaron will talk a little bit later, too, about some bicycle options on Lion Street later and just as we talked about the prior providing that multi-use path on the Lion Street structure. But each of these different options we're thinking through to in the future, when you have bike facilities on Lion, being able to connect, have a safe connection across this intersection up to that multi-use path.
Ellsworth, okay. Yep, so moving on now to Second and Ellsworth. So this is really trying to address the kind of the southbound constraint on the bridge. And this this option we're looking at would involve adding a southbound left turn at Second and Ellsworth. So pull the left turns out of the through movement. That's actually a pretty heavy movement, that left turn, because that's part of your couplet.
So would you be taking away that parking along that?
Yes, yeah, it would it would require taking.
I have a bus driver friend that drew me a map about kind of the similar thing, getting rid of that.
Oh, did he?
The she, yeah.
Yeah, and you'll you'll see when we we show some of the results. And honestly, this one has probably more impact in the AM peak period as well, but this one this one has some significant benefit to the bridge, so. And it provides us additional opportunities to protect pedestrians as well because you can actually hold that left turn when you run your pedestrian or at least your initial pedestrian phase, but you don't have to hold your through movements when you do. It's not a shared movement, so. Good operational benefits there. Moving on, so looking at our downtown crossings, these are these are your unsignaled pedestrian crossings, just adding RFBs, that those are those rectangular rapid flashing beacons. So it's just adding a little bit more enhancement to those, more visual, so folks can hit the button and get the flasher so people, especially in the dark or in at night, people see that they're crossing.
During the peak periods, there's some pretty heavy volumes and it can be pretty challenging for pedestrians to make to cross the the highway in those locations.
And these these would be focused on the, I guess, the upstream side of these intersections that the idea is if folks have to stop upstream, you you reduce any risk of a right turn or left turn hook crash because there's everybody's just making a through movement at that point.
So are you envisioning the crossing to be right at the from corner to corner or and have the stop in the middle of the block or?
No, it would it would be based, it would really be the same configuration as today, just adding in the flashers. Because you you already have those crosswalks marked out and stop bars as well. I think you can see them a little bit on the on the slide.
Was your question, are they mid-block or intersections?
Yeah.
Yeah, these these are more focused on intersections where kind of just where the pedestrians would be crossing.
I cross there all the time with my dog, so.
Okay.
I go to Hasty Freeze way too much.
It would give you a button and a flasher.
Okay, cool.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a quick question on your previous slide?
Yeah, please do.
The the center lane, could that be a left turn and continuance lane?
Center lane, so make it a dual left essentially, so you'd have.
So you could turn left from the two left lanes.
So thought about that fairly briefly, honestly, because the we lose the ability to, well, for one thing, the through movement is much heavier here. So we don't, the the left turn is actually, you know, it it balances out well to to three lanes with left turn being in their own lane. You you would have the option, but if we if we do that, we want to protect the ped crossing.
Excuse me, yeah.
If if we do that and want to protect the ped crossing, you have to you'd have to hold the through movement because it's a shared, it would be a shared through left. So you would actually lose a lot of efficiency for your your southbound. And part of the reason we're trying to do this is gain efficiency for the bridge because this is this is kind of the southbound bottleneck for the for the bridge or it's it's one of the contributing bottlenecks to the bridge. So that's that's the reason why we we didn't advance that.
And at this location, too, having a a left and a through left can create some safety visibility issues when you have a pedestrian that that somebody stops in the right turn lane for a pedestrian and then and then the car behind doesn't realize why they're stopped and then there can be that and that conflict with pedestrians. So it creates a little bit more safety. We're also aware of that, what we just talked about at First and Lions, but we actually, when we did our operational analysis, we were able to run that pedestrian phase separately so we won't have we won't have those safety conflicts in that location.
Great. Then moving on to Ninth Lion and Oregon 99. So this this concept is looking at some of the queuing issues here and just the kind of the congestion issues we're seeing and also the that the bicycle and pedestrian facilities under that that over crossing. So this this intersection really operates like a it's a kind of a small, single point urban interchange, spooy is the term we use as traffic engineers. It's it's difficult because, you know, visibility and things like that are a little little challenging here. The signal timing is very challenging to try and make sure you don't end up with folks backed up into the wrong way direction. But there's there's a pretty good solution here to help increase the capacity of this intersection, and that's make the northbound off ramp from 99E into a dual dual lane approach. That allows us to cut down on the green time for that approach at the signal and give that green time back to Ninth Avenue so that that we can help move through vehicles that are destined for 99E northbound better.
That was one of the heavy traffic growth projections at that intersection.
Yeah, and it it helps, it really helps all movements. It's typical of these intersections when they're they're at capacity, you if as long as you're addressing one of the critical movements, you can you can benefit all movements as long as you rebalance your signal timing.
And our plan would be, as you can see from that concept, to be to move the pedestrian and bikes off of the roadway and create a multi-use path on the outside of that that structure.
I'll show the zoomed up version so you folks don't have to squint as hard. Sorry, I should have gone there quicker. Yeah, so you can see where the the bikes and pads are moved and we put in barriers that would be an ODOT requirement just based on the stand their standards. And as soon as we mess with things underneath the bridge, we'd have to meet their standards. I mean, I think on one side, we'd have to push the slope back. We'd have to cut in a little bit to create that that area. So that's this was the the concept that came about this location.
Are we planning, yeah, I'm wondering, again, I've I live near here, so I walk walk through here. There's that walking path, you know, right when you get off at 99, kind of by the the art structure with the with the flowers. Are we planning on connecting maybe to there for a bike path? Is that totally takes people off of the main road or is that a plan?
I think we're going to talk about that in our next slide.
Little bit, I mean, but we're we're showing, I mean, we're showing some connections here, too. We would be tying into the and I'm I'm not quite.
That's the path I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, so we would be connecting to that one.
Okay, cool.
Yes. All right, now looking at Lion and Ellsworth for bicycle facilities. So we we're looking at a couple options or well, three options on the corridor. One would be a two-way cycle track on Lion Street. Another would be one-way cycle tracks on both Lion Street and Ellsworth, so it would be directional, northbound on Lion, southbound on Ellsworth. Let me just clarify, a cycle track, as Council Newton asked earlier about, that would be a protected bikeway. So it's separated from the motor vehicle traffic.
And by by separated, it would be essentially curb separated, so it would the cycle track would be raised. It would be level essentially level with the sidewalk.
How raised, like?
At the same height as the sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Okay.
So you think of your curb height, it's on the top of the curb instead of down at street level. Now you'd have to come back down to street level at your intersections, but.
But they're not sharing space with the sidewalk, the sidewalk is separate, it's its own bike.
Yep. And then the other options, a buffered bike lane, which is, I think we'd have a three foot, three foot buffer and you could put in like candlesticks or something like that to help emphasize it.
And that would be directly adjacent to traffic, so that wouldn't be raised, wouldn't be protected, the buffer.
Not the same level of protection as the.
Is it possible to do a raised buffer with candlesticks?
Yes, you can do, yeah, you can do protection.
And that's done, I think.
Yeah. Could someone please define that term? I don't know what candlesticks is.
It's it's tubular markers, the epoxy, the tubular markers, they kind of almost look like.
Yeah, about this high.
Yeah.
Not. Any light down at night? No. Then then we also had an off corridor concept, which would really work with any of these. And this is the Montgomery Street Neighborhood Bikeway. So this would be kind of making a route for more maybe recreational riders or, you know, folks with children, things like that. I know when I take my kids for bike rides, I won't take them on a even a buffered bike lane if it's busy, if there's fast riders there, I generally try to stick with the neighborhood bikeway, so that's that type of rider. And it would there, you know, there's a variety of treatments with signage, there's things you can do with always stops or diverters, things like that. But that Montgomery Street corridor would be a good candidate for that because it's continuous and runs all the way north, south.
And those are really low cost, usually those are just signing and striping types of changes on that facility, no, no major changes.
We also can tie into Montgomery Street well with this multi-use path that we were showing on the other option.
I'm starting to see some conflicts with your other slides, though, because the designs that you had for, I think it was Second and Ellsworth, aren't showing these bike lanes that you're talking about on this slide here.
Correct, so Second and Ellsworth, the the bike lane would be on the west side and the the turn lane would be on the east side of the intersection. Because it's since it's southbound, your bike lane will be on the.
Right, I didn't see that pictured in.
No, and and it wasn't, but it it could work with that concept.
There's still enough room.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty tight.
It's tight. It's definitely tight and you probably would lose, you might lose some of your buffer at that location, so you might have to do a little bit more with some striping or take some of your sidewalk space. There would be some design detail in that for sure, but it could it could be fit together.
And and that's kind of the as we come up with our kind of final recommendations, we'll then have a concept that shows everything together. But some of the, as Aaron will talk a little bit, there's different kind of packages of these improvements. You could choose one thing, but not the other. And that's what, as we get there, a lot of a lot of those details, but we've tried to make sure that everything is feasible that we've put on the table.
Cool, thank you.
Question?
Mark Sedell here again. I'd like to point out that bicycling is not the same as it was a few years ago. I get around on an e-bike and I I travel at or almost at traffic speeds in 25 mile an hour sections. So what I used to teach our bike safety kids in fifth grade is no longer valid. I I never pull up beside a car at an intersection anymore. I've been doored and, you know, knocked off the road so many times. So I I behave as if I were a motorcyclist. I I come in behind a car, make sure they see me. I always use a headlight and a taillight, even in broad daylight, just to make sure I they see me. And what what I find is that drivers, almost to a person, respect that. They they never crowd up beside me again or anymore. They always hang back as if I were a motorcycle because I'm behaving like a car and it's much safer. I've never been doored and I've not been squeezed off the road. So one example is brought up by entering the Lion Street Bridge to go to North Albany from First Avenue. I always come down First Avenue and take the lane. And in heavy traffic, it's pretty obvious that I'm not going to either pass a car on the right or or certainly not on the left. And I've had almost nobody challenge that. They simply treat me as a bike as a motorcycle. I think that in the future, more and more people will use e-bikes to actually get around. And so the the reality on the road is changing. I'd say maybe half the people that are out there now are on an e-bike, especially commuters. If I have to get somewhere, I always use an e-bike.
Yeah, I mean, those are all considerations. Obviously, we do want to make sure, though, we design for all users as well, right? So while we 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 want facilities that work for e-bikes, it's also important for the folks that are are slower and are are on a manual bike that they can also use it effectively.
I have a quick question as well about Montgomery Street being a neighborhood bikeway. So at the end of Montgomery is also kind of that little walking path we talked about. Would we anticipate connecting Montgomery Street to that little walkway area?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we we showed that on this this previous slide.
Oh, there we go. Sorry, I didn't see that part.
Yep, yeah. All right. So let's let's talk a little bit about the the future conditions. So this is this is a look at what what things might look like if we don't do anything. So this is this is a 20 year forecast and we put this into one of our simulation tools. And I'm going to show you first a little, think about this, similar to like a, I think like Google Maps, when you look at the traffic patterns on Google Maps at any time of day and it shows you where the congestion is, that's really what these colors are showing you. So if it's red, dark red, that's, you know, stop, stop and go queuing. It's it's pretty backed up. So what we're looking at right now is this is four to 4:15, kind of averaged, four to 4:15 during, so four to 4:15 PM in the year, we believe this is 2043, that was 20 years from our 2023 data. So you can see right away, we've already got First Avenue was queued out and this 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 queue ends at the end of my model, so it would continue on. That that's a pretty bad queue. We have queuing down at Ninth and Lion. We have queuing on Second Avenue. We're having some seeing some issues in here and then we have queuing on the bridge southbound backing up towards Spring Hill and then we have queuing on Spring Hill at that southbound left as well. And this is, we're not even into rush hour yet. So as we we continue to move up, this is 15 minutes later, you can see those queues continuing to extend, so these bottle bottleneck dislocation, the westbound right, you can see the the backup on Spring Hill and now we're starting to push back towards North Albany Road. Second still backed up and, yep, and then at 99E as well, this this ramp is backed up. Keeps moving ahead, so it's 15 minutes later, it's getting worse, later worse. Now you can see we're backed up past North Albany Road. So now this whole area and to your point earlier, this is.
Not 20 years from now, this happens now.
Yeah. This the the extent of what you're not seeing here is that the the cars that aren't actually even getting into this model on on First Avenue, we're only getting about 70% of the vehicles that actually want to use this route, which is extremely concerning because that means that those vehicles are not going to stay on this route. They're going to look for other alternatives and they're going to be showing up on the local streets. So Spring Hill is backed up out of the model. And again, these these endpoints, I just mean, that's as far as I drew the the lines in the model. It it goes on much farther and you can see US 20 eastbound is backed up out of our model as well. And as we continue to move through the peak hour towards, so we're approaching 6 o'clock. So even when we get to 6 o'clock, we still have vehicles that haven't even been able to enter. been able to enter our system at that point. So this is, this is that no build condition. These key bottlenecks, you can see at, down at First and Lyon Street, that one's pretty obvious, the one at Spring Hill, problematic, and then down here as well, this, it's interesting, it looks like, the, the issue is really at First, but it's actually more of an issue at Second. It's just because that's such a short block with the signal timing, it doesn't take much for it to, to go right back across the bridge. So that's a, that's a quick look at, at the, kind of the, we call it the queue plot, and I can show you what it looks like in real time, if I can. So here's a look at kind of what that would be, this is at, what, 4:45. You can see just a, a kind of a visual of what that would, would look like on the system, you can see this is, so coming off of Spring Hill, you can see these queues spilled back, gives you an idea kind of what that, that dark red looks like. And I've got, we, we also included bicycles and pedestrians in this system, so you, I think we, if we get lucky, we might, there we, there we go, there's a bicyclist going across the bridge. We also actually included the bikes that do ride on the road, because some bikes ride on the road, some ride on the shoulder, on the bridge, especially, I think that's southbound, so we had captured that, so there are some bikes actually riding on the, on the road. So this is just kind of a look at, at what the, what that's, the system would look like, you can see the congestion down here, that's all the folks trying to merge to get on the freeway, this is the end of the model, that's why the vehicles are disappearing, so don't get distracted by that.
And you can see the queuing on the ramp there, too.
Yep, queuing back as far as we've, basically all the way back to the end of the model here, so it's queuing back onto 9090.
There's a drainage problem there as well.
So this is a, this is just a kind of a, a quick overview of our, our no build condition. So the key findings from this are, so we call our system that, that model, kind of the model extent, so it's study area. Our peak hour delay increases from one and a half to nearly 10 minutes per vehicle, so that's of all vehicles that enter, enter that area, from, in the existing condition that we modeled, so we calibrated it to existing, they average about one and a half minutes of delay.
You put that back in light show mode, please.
Oh yeah, sorry about that. In the, in the no build condition, that goes to nearly 10, 10 minutes, so just think about how much congestion you're experiencing today when you drive the corridor during the peak hour, multiply that by about six, six to seven, and that's, that's about what we're seeing for the, the no build condition. Spring Hill and US 20, we're seeing the queuing, First and Lyon, the issue we've talked about, First and Second and Ellsworth, heavy southbound left, limited green time issues, queues back through North Albany Road, Second eastbound queues up, and then these issues could cause folks to try to shift to Third and Fourth Street in both directions approaching the Cupwood. And then we see the northbound off-ramp queues at 9090 and Lyon Street. So we, we talked about the concepts already. We took these concepts and we put them into project bundles, and, and then evaluated them on the same model that we're showing here, so we, we put those in to see what, what kind of improvement we could get. So some of the other concepts, we put in all of these bundles, but the idea was to figure out competing concepts, so for example, First and Lyon, how do each of those perform against both the no build condition and against each other, although, a lot of, most of the other locations wasn't that big a deal. So, so we, we included those in all models. So for example, Spring Hill Drive, we included the dual southbound left in all, in all models. Lyon Street Bridge, we include that multi-use path in all models, First and Second, that's all signal timing adjustments, and the new southbound left turn at Second and Ellsworth, we included in all options, the, we added in the RFBs, those do not have a significant impact on traffic operations. And then the dual lane northbound off-ramp from 9090, 9090 is on all these project bundles. Then, then we looked at the, the super elevation adjustment in bundles two and three, versus just doing a truck route to Hickory in bundle one. We looked at the three different options at First and Lyon across bundles one, two, and three, so you can see that with the, in the table. And then we looked at two-way cycle track, one-way cycle tracks, and buffered bike lanes across the other, the three as well. So that's, that's the breakdown. So here's a look up, and again, most of these are, there's a lot of similarity between these two in terms of how they perform, but since we already ran through no build, this will give you a little bit of context. Do, gonna actually pull these up together so we can see them at the same time, gives you an idea of how much difference our, our improvements are making. If we go to start of our, start of our time period here, so this is, no build is on my right, and this bundle one is on, on the left, so this one does have the dual right turn at First and Lyon, and you can already see that, that benefit. This, you can see we've already queued out of our model, no build, but we're actually maintaining the queue in the new, in our, in this project bundle, we're doing better up at Spring Hill. Now, one challenge we're running into is as we fix this bottleneck, there's more vehicles crossing the bridge, and that, that creates more issues down at Spring Hill. And so there's, there's kind of a, a trade-off with all of this, right, as you unplug one bottleneck, then you realize you have other bottlenecks downstream. So you see a little bit of that going on, but overall, we see quite a bit of improvement across the, the system as we, as we can kind of cycle through, I'm going to skip ahead a little faster. So you can see here, now we're really in the, into the peak of the peak period, with everything queued up in no build, and we're managing our queues on, I mean, there's queuing on the bridge, or we can't get rid of that, but it's a lot better than that no build condition. And it's queuing in both directions. Interesting thing we're seeing on, in this direction, this right turn really becomes an issue as we get more and more traffic crossing the bridge, because this is a little, this is a pinch point right here. And it's hard to get the efficiency of two lanes at this location when you've got a whole bunch of people making this right turn.
So on your projections going out 20 years, is that taking into consideration the population increase?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this includes the, I mean, it was modeled in the MPOs, travel demand model, or the combined MPO travel demand model, so it includes both Corvallis and Albany. So it does include significant amount of growth in North Albany, primary locations where we see growth are really on that westbound right turn at First Avenue, and then on the Spring Hill and North Albany Road approaches, that's where, that's where we're seeing a lot of growth. Not seeing a lot of growth on US 20 between Corvall, Corvallis and Albany, because that corridor is pretty capacity limited already, there's only so many vehicles that can get through there, and the models recognize that, and route folks into other, other routes to, to make that trip. So this is, this is a look at kind of the overall performance, I can skip to the end of the simulation, you can see here, so we, we still have some issues at Second, we haven't completely fixed this issue, but looking at some of our other performance measures, we've improved it significantly over that no build condition. I'm going to swing back to the slides. So system-wide performance measures, future conditions, PM peak hour delay decreased from 10 minutes to three to four minutes per vehicle, still quite a bit worse than present-day conditions, right, still about twice as bad, but a lot better than that no build condition. And for the levels of investment we're looking at, that's a pretty, pretty decent return in terms of what those alternatives are buying us. So quite a bit of improvement in delay. That, that new dual left turn really helps things at Spring Hill, it increased throughput on US 20, like I, I mentioned, highlights that bottleneck on the north side of the Lyon Street Bridge with the westbound right turn, Spring Hill, and then at First and Lyon, the dual right turn movement alternatives help improve the capacity at that, that location. And then our, I think it was in bundle three, our bike lane on the south side of First Avenue actually had some operational benefits, because we didn't have to, if the, that bike lane's on the north side, we actually have to put in a bike phase for the crossing and hold the right turns, if it's on the south side, we don't have to. So it actually has an operational and a safety benefit for, for bicyclists.
Yeah, I was just going to add, Aaron's been hitting on a lot of those operational, you know, improvements, but in part of this, too, there's the multimodal side of things, you're going to have better bike facilities and safer facilities, so not only are you improving the operations, but you're also providing better, for some, better multimodal facilities and safer crossings and safer bike facilities for, for your residents and users.
And with the RFBs included, we actually did include those in the operational analysis, and they, we did include some impact from those, assuming people are more responsive to those than they are to a typical crosswalk, so those technically have a negative, I guess, benefit on traffic operations, but the trade-off of all our other operational improvements, we still get, you know, system-wide, a much, much bigger benefit. So this, this is looking in, First, Second and Ellsworth, and so the left turn improves throughput on the Ellsworth Bridge, and then signal timing adjustments that we now have the flexibility to implement, also improve our through movement capacity. And then at 9090 and Lyon Street, that dual off-ramp helps the, with the queuing issues. This table, it's a lot of numbers, which we engineers tend to gravitate towards, but the, the key here is looking at how many people are able to get across the bridge. So between four and six PM in our no build condition, same traffic demand, so same number of people want to cross the bridge, but only 4,400 are able to cross the bridge in that time period. In our bundles, our different project bundles, that ranges from, you know, 11 to a 13% improvement, so we're able to get almost up to 600 more vehicles across the bridge with those, with those improvements. And that's really without doing anything operationally to the bridge, we're just addressing some of those bottleneck issues on each side at Spring Hill and Ellsworth and First and Lyon. So that's, and then the Ellsworth Bridge, we're even able, we're able to get more, we're able to get 15% more vehicles across the bridge than, than under the no build condition. And you can see that westbound right turn, we go from 1,000 vehicles over that two-hour timeframe to more than 1,500, so improve it by almost 50%.
I have another question, based on that. So if we have a lot more cars going over the bridges, what does that do in terms of bridge maintenance? And I don't know, if maybe, maybe 600 cars more in two hours is no big deal, but that's something that we would have to consider, I should think, if, if the bridges have a lot more wear on them, that's, I mean, I don't know, I'm, it's just a question.
It's, it's a good question, I think the, I guess the key context to remember here is, this is, we're looking at demand versus the vehicles that get through in a set time period, those trips will likely cross the bridge at some point during the day under the no build condition, right? You get, basically, folks just, they're queued up longer, and it takes them longer to get across the bridge, they eventually do, maybe it'll be 8:00 PM instead of 6:30 PM, they'll get across, so I think net, these projects, I don't, don't see them, nothing's completely fixing the capacity constraint issue, so I don't see it likely that you have a lot of that kind of induced demand issue, which is like, oh, you, you open a bottleneck, and now a bunch more people will come and drive through, it's still going to be congested, so it's not like we're going to make things great, and everybody's going to try to, people who wouldn't normally make a trip are going to decide to because it's so fast. So I, I'd say that overall, looking at like US 20 and the bridges, I wouldn't expect the overall daily volumes, which is what really impacts maintenance, I wouldn't expect those to change significantly.
You would not.
I would not, no.
Thank you.
So, next steps, 4:58.
I think we were gonna, Rob, did you want to wrap up? But I guess before Rob comes up, do you have any other follow-up questions for us?
Could you do us a favor, can you send these to City Clerk, the Deputy City Clerk?
Absolutely.
These slides, and I think we'd all like to see them and, and talk through them, you know, with each other.
Yep.
Okay with you guys?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did any of your information affect the cost for? Yes, we have, we have concept drawings, David Evans, our sub-consultant, has prepared concepts of all these and actually provide cost estimates, so we'd be happy to provide that information.
Can you please send that as well?
Yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation today.
Thank you very much.
All right, so that was a lot of information in a short amount of time, and if you're like me, I'm not specifically tuned in to the transportation jargon so much, so this whole process, working with DKS, with Aaron and Scott, has been kind of an education process, learning, learning the lingo, learning the language, so, so if you have a lot of questions, a lot of, if you have a lot of questions, totally understandable. So this was kind of a, a quick run-through overview of what we've been doing, and one thing to keep in mind is as we continue on with the Transportation System Plan, moving ahead in the future, this, the results of this study will be wrapped up into the Transportation System Plan. So, so some of what you, some of the information you saw here, you'll be able to follow that information along with, along with the TSP as we go through that process, so to just keep that in mind. So, so the next steps, what we are doing is, we are going to take the projects that are recommended today, that you, some of the projects that you've seen, we're going to develop a prioritized list, and we're going to, you know, with any feedback that we've received from council, we're going to put that into a final report, and, and it'll make that report available, of course, to council, and take a look at that, and some of the staff's, Councilor Newton, some of the information crash data, and some of the data, real background information we'll have as well. So, so stay tuned, this is not the end of this process.
What would you have, something like that, back to us?
Our goal is to have this process wrapped up before the Transportation System Plan kicks off, and we are, it's a good segue to, to the next process. So TSP is kicking off soon, we are going to have a, a March 11th work session with council on that TSP update. So our goal is to have this wrapped up, kind of in that timeframe, before the TSP kicks off. So within the next month to six weeks, this process will be done, we'll have a final report.
Okay.
And, and.
Thank you.
You can take a look. So, so just a quick update with the Transportation System Plan, like I just alluded to, we are having a council work session on March 11th, which, we'll go into detail of that process. What we've been doing in the meantime is we've been coordinating with ODOT and developing a, kind of a scope of work. And one thing to remember as well is, the Transportation System Plan is an ODOT-funded plan, and we have to conform to a lot of state planning rules and state guidelines. So ODOT is going to fund and kind of be heavily involved with that, with that process, with the TSP. So, so that's coming up, so just kind of put that in the back of your brain, it's coming up. There's one other item I wanted to touch on, and that's kind of, as a direct result of this corridor study, ODOT has taken some of the low-hanging fruit, some of the projects, recommended projects from this process, and is putting that into an arts grant application, and art stands for, yes, All Roads Transportation, I have that written down, and it's too small. So, but, so the concept of that grant is, ODOT is able to spend money off the highway system, so they are able to spend money, not only in the highway system, but on some local surface roads as well. So ODOT is, is applying for that grant, they've taken some of the concept improvements on First and Lyon, and Second and Ellsworth, the kind of, the, the projects that are recommended there, well, they've wrapped up in that application, and also the crosswalk improvements there on Lyon and Ellsworth, I think that's part of that grant application. So that, that application is not finalized, it's not submitted yet, but some of the preliminary evaluation of that grant application is very positive, and it's scoring very high in the preliminary reviews. If ODOT is successful in that application, we won't receive funding immediately for those projects, those projects would be put into the STIP process for ODOT, and that STIP process would be from 2027 to 2030.
So STIP means statewide transportation implementation?
Plan.
Okay.
Yep.
Improvement plan, okay.
Yep. So that's why ODOT was anxious, even though the project has not been finalized, this corridor study has not been finalized, they were anxious to get, get that application started, even though, even though we haven't finalized everything, because they want to get that into the queue and get that into the. the, the STIP process if they're successful. So that's it. So if you have any questions?
Awesome. Commission? Please.
So this has been a topic of our meetings for quite some time with the Transportation Commission. Their word, and they're fine with this now, or?
Yeah, and ODOT has been at the, at the table during this whole process. So our meetings have been with, with the city, with Scott, and with Aaron, and with ODOT. So every, every concept, every improvement that we've kind of vetted out, they, they've been weighing in on that. So, so, so the final outcome won't be a surprise, and nothing that we need to sell to ODOT, because they, they would have approved it.
Next is business from the council, so. Hey, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen, again, for your presentation. We'd like to look forward to seeing your documentation once you get it put together for us. Thank you. So next is business from the council slash commission. So I will start with Commissioner Cratch.
Hi, Chuck Cratch, current Chair of the Transportation Board. We thank the council and staff for inviting us to this. I, I hope you guys look at this for other commissions, because we, on the other side, often feel left out, or we often wonder if, how much our input is worth. This proves to us that we have some effectiveness, and we really thank you for inviting us here. We have several members here, so you can see how committed we are. Talking about our goals, just very briefly. We're planning, the council passed to us a suggestion to review the RRFPs, or the crosswalk, lighted crosswalks. So we're, Ron Irish, our contact person, is gonna schedule a tour with our commission to go see all these sites. So it gives us the opportunity to prioritize those, so we can send that back to you for your consideration. We've also asked Ron to look at, for, for our future meetings, we'd like representatives from the rail, bus, intermodal, AMPO, Lynn County, and ODOT to visit our, to attend our meetings and to give brief presentations, so we can learn what's going on, maybe learn something to pass on again to you folks, without you going through that step. So again, thanks for your time. We appreciate being invited.
Thank you. Councilor Siddle? Siddle?
Yes.
Business?
Oh, okay. Looking ahead, we, the city is growing, obviously. The traffic proves it. When our bridges fill up, and it takes more than five or 10 minutes to get over the bridge in the morning, it begins to matter what we do. Looking out, for example, just an example, this city could put in bridge work, and pretty soon, we'd look like Salem or Portland with high-rise approaches. But you, you have to ask, is that the kind of city we want to make? Optimize both mass transit and alternative transportation modes? Of course, I'm the bike guy, but I, I think it's valid. Livability, in my opinion, increases when we have options. I prefer to bicycle. Well, if it's not possible to do so safely, that deducts from my well-being. And you need to think about that in, in terms of the future of Albany. Albany will grow. It's proven, because this traffic study has shown that. And within 10 to 20 years, if we do nothing, traffic will become impossible for commuters. So consider carefully options. Do the traffic counts that you need to do now to see, and ask, where are people going on the streets? If all the traffic is local, then we need to think, well, perhaps better bus service. But if all the, if much, much of the traffic is out of town, like Salem, the rush hour traffic I'm talking about, then we need to look at alternative methods, like either light rail or heavy rail. Albany is uniquely situated in the heavy rail system. This, the city used to be called the hub city. And that because all the, there, there's the main line, and then Oregon Electric, and then the, the line that goes to, to Corvallis, and then down to Toledo, they all converge right here. So we need to ask ourselves, could we use that, the heavy rail system to alleviate rush hour traffic? It may not be possible, but at least we need, we need to look right now and ask ourselves, what kind of city do we want to create down the line?
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And we are looking at bridges, because we don't wanna be West Salem, trust me. I've been stuck there at 3:30 to 6:30, just a traffic fender bender, and it was lockdown, it was gridlocked. But I appreciate that. Thank you. Is Commissioner Streitberger? Streitbart?
I'm good. I just want to second what Chuck was saying. You know, it's, I'm on several commissions, this one and the Arts Commission, and it's nice to see, you know, I join those commissions to try to make a difference locally, or have some impact, and it's nice to see what we do in these meetings kind of resonate.
Thank you. Commissioner McCullough?
I'd just like to thank the City Council for, for giving us the opportunity to be here. I second, of course, what Chuck says with letting you know our voices actually have opinion, because we're gonna make some changes. And I know the, the commission hears about me a lot when we're in our meetings. And so I'm excited for some, some difference, some differences to come.
Thank you, Commissioners. And like I said, Jack, Councilman McGee is not here with us. She's traveling for work. And I'm sure she's a part of our Cascade West Council of Government's Transportation Committee, and she's in the right space for that, for that, and she's the right person for that. Council, we'll start with you. I'll start with Councilman McGee.
Happy New Year. School is back in session. Enjoy time with my family in Chicago. I finally got back Thursday, so back into the swing of things.
Councilman Kupczynski?
Nothing this evening.
Councilor Newton?
Nothing this evening. Thank you for asking.
Councilor Smith?
The question came up earlier about flooding at Spring Hill and 20. A good example of what that area looks like when it floods is the, the photo of the 1996 flood on the website. I remember standing on Highway 20 at Spring Hill, and the water was up to within a, I don't know, 20 feet of this, of the stop sign at the intersection. There wasn't any on the north, on the riverside. That's when the, the entire golf course was underwater, and people in North Albany were being ferried back and forth to downtown on the rail line, on boxcars. So it makes me sound really old. It was really only 27 years ago, so, but that, the, the photos is illustrative.
Councilor Novak?
Yes, thank you. I just wanna say that I have really enjoyed having the commission here with us this evening. I, I very much appreciate citizen input. I appreciate our commissions. I would like to see us do more of this. I thank you all for your commitment and your willingness to serve, and I like hearing your voices. I like knowing that you have ideas that you wanna share, you wanna make a difference. Yay. I think this is how things are supposed to be. Council's working together with the people who live in the town, and everyone listening to everyone, and it, it just, to me, it creates trust, it furthers transparency, it makes me very happy. So thank you.
Thank you for that. And I will echo what Councilor Novak just said. I do thank each of the Commissioners for being here tonight and volunteering to accept the responsibility of getting us information so we can make better decisions. As far as tonight's concerned, I actually don't, not having any stress about the football game. I've actually enjoyed this meeting, and I appreciate the gentleman that presented to us. And I'm looking forward to hearing back from Commissioners in later, in later time. Thank you, Ron, for your presentation. And I'll turn it over to City Council. I mean, excuse me, City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. And I won't extend the evening any longer either. There's lots of echoes. So Happy New Year, and thank you to Commissioner Cratch and the rest of the commission.
Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.